Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this June 26th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. And tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come before you tonight to conduct the business of the city. We invite you here and help lead, guide, and direct our decisions and our conversation. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Which is going to place leads to the flag of our country. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, here. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Best, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Okay, the first item of business is the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to make one note in the document that went out to the public that the minutes that we were reviewing are for June the 12th. And we have June the 10th on there, just on our outside sheet. I just want to make note of that. And that is correct, they were supposed to be June 12th.
Okay.
And that's the only thing I want to amend.
Okay, now, and what's the, yes, sir?
Are we going to record that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll approve that and then we'll do that.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Now, part of that consent agenda for the public was a special proclamation that was issued just then. And we want to have very kind of like special presentation of that down front by the Board of Aldermen because we have a very special important person here tonight. The proclamation that was just approved by the New Bern Board, I want to read it. Whereas Special Olympics is the world's largest sports organization for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, providing year-round training and competitions to four million athletes and United States sports partners in 172 countries. And whereas Allison Cheedy has participated in Special Olympics for approximately 12 years, including summer competitions held annually in Raleigh, and she has trained and completed at a high level in the sports of swimming and bowling. She has won several medals, most recently winning the gold medal for her division in the state's 2017 Fall Games. She was also previously bestowed the Athlete of the Year Award by the Association for Retarded Citizens, A R C. And whereas most recent accomplishments came in the form of an announcement that she was chosen to be on the North Carolina Special Olympics team and compete in the annual National 2018 Special Olympics USA Games in Seattle, Washington. And the USA Games will be held in July and Ally will participate in the swimming competition. And as a member of the team, she was chosen to be a health ambassador to promote proper diet and exercise. And whereas, she is the first athlete from Craven County ever chosen to be on the North Carolina Special Olympics team. Now, therefore, I'm Dean Outlaw, Mayor of the City of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim Allison Cheedy as the distinguished Special Olympics athlete. And we encourage all of our citizens to support and cheer for her in the 2018 Special Olympics USA Games. And you are already a winner to us. (APPLAUSE). I think at this time, City Mayor Mark Stevens has a few things he would like to present you. And this is for photographs, this is the, we're actually going to read the proclamation on Thursday, so we have this tonight just for that. So let me talk to the board and see everything say.
So we have a couple of things here for you to take with you because we want you to think about New Bern, because while you're participating in Seattle, we're going to be thinking about you and if you'd like to have a lead or any men or women that may you'll have a little bit of wisdom here if you put up a pen and represent anybody in the board.
Thank you all so much. (APPLAUSE).
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to stay on this, on the same situation that they're having an event at Creekside to send her off. And that's going to be at 6:00 PM, June 28th, at Creekside, where you can go and there'll be food and stuff, and they're going to kind of send her off to the Olympics. So if anybody wants to go or wants to participate, it's on Facebook as well, but it's going to be Creekside Park at 6:00 PM Thursday.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, at this time, we're going to get item number five.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. As you recall, some time ago, we gave the Board an update regarding the closure of Kidsville until we could get a report from a Parks and Recreation Facilities Auditor to come in and take a look at it. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hughes, who is going to give you an update as to the status.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Just wanted to give you a history. Kidsville was installed in the spring of 1994 by a company called Leatherson Associates. This group specialized in coming into communities to build wood playground systems. The playground size is approximately 15,000 square feet, so it's a decent-sized playground. And this was a community-built project where the community came out, they made donations, businesses sponsored it, and they also volunteered to build this structure. Kidsville is now 24-years-old, and so we knew there were some issues with this playground, so we did contract with a consultant that specializes in wood structures. We did receive the audit. This playground was designed to last 20 years, and we've gotten 24 years of service out of it. The A S T M and C P S C standards for playground safety have changed considerably since this was built. Wood is no longer an acceptable material for playground, playgrounds such as this. When the playground was built, chromated copper arsenic, C C A, was used as a wood preservative that's no longer allowed on public playgrounds. The audit reported several structural and safety issues. Bottom line, this playground is simply worn out. We've gotten our money's worth out of this. The company that looked at this told us to renovate this without taking the main structure that supports the playground out. It would cost approximately $200,000 putting in plastic lumber. If we tore it out completely and went back with a similar type thing with plastic wood structures, it would cost approximately $250,000. So moving forward, staff's recommendations is to tear down the existing structure, install a new composite playground designed to current standards that will be inclusive for all abilities, designed to include areas of play for ages two to five and five to 12, be colorful, engaging, provide artistic as well as fitness components. We currently have funding in the next budget for approximately $150,000 for all of our playgrounds, but we wouldn't recommend using all of that on Kidsville because we do have issues with some of the playgrounds. But using the majority of that to begin work on the playground. We also recommend having community involvement in this by having focused groups, inviting kids out to let us know what type of playground they would like to see moving forward with the Kidsville 2.0, so to speak. And with the possibility of making this a bigger playground, phasing this in over time by getting buy-in from the community through sponsorships, corporate naming rights and things like that. So that's staff's recommendations. We'd like to hear what the Board has to say, and we're happy to do as you feel.
Well, there was a tremendous support within the community. Beth Atkins, as I recall, was the driving force behind this, and then she quickly assembled quite a few volunteers right down, I believe my four-year-old son at the time was washing tires, scrubbing tires with some of the kids. So it was a great weekend to build it, and the type of support that was there 24-years ago, I think, could be there again. So, you know, it's a very iconic part of New Bern now, and it's going to be, it's going to be a real loss if we don't figure out some means of replication. Or I assume that there's not any point source problem, it's just, it's just the whole project is pretty well, it's not any, it's not a, you know, little microcosm area of it that's bad.
Right, it's the entire structure.
The whole thing.
That's correct.
So, from there, you know, I can tell you that from what's been said there already, you're going to hear a lot of public comment on that. And it's all going to be supportive of some means of continuing the ambiance and all of the culture that's come about from that. Yes?
Out of all the parks that, um, Kidsville is actually the largest one and the most expensive one. How many are we looking at that's going to cost close to that in repair? And have you evaluated, do we need to shrink down and build from what we have with the larger parks? Have you evaluated any of that?
I have evaluated the playgrounds that are in the City of New Bern, and there are a few neighborhood parks that we just don't have use in those areas anymore, so it's really not beneficial to have the playground structures. Once, once they age out, I recommend pulling those out. We do have Stanley White Recreation Center, there's basically a large playground there. It needs some work, and we don't recommend taking that out because we do have a good neighborhood that likes to play over there. Glen Bernie Park has a very good playground that's in great shape over there. Overall, the playgrounds are in decent shape, very decent shape. The main thing we need to look at is the protective surfacing. There are some decks that need to be repaired, but the expense overall to get the other playgrounds back to standards is not that much. The biggest, the biggest amount that we're going to have to look at is for the Kidsville at West New Bern.
The other question while other Aldermen are going to be asking questions, my comments. I know that this is not the only city that's having this problem right now, and have you reached out? I think I asked you earlier, are there other cities that, what have they done? Do you know? I mean, I don't know whether or not at this time the Board wants to get an ad hoc of maybe three members, they go research this a little bit more, and I don't like to make committees, just be making committees, but other than the fact that the Board, I mean, this is a very serious situation. This is a very important part of our city. And I think maybe doing an ad hoc to report back like we don't, other things would be better because the only other thing to do is for us to have a special meeting, a public meeting that we go out and physically check it out and investigate it further. But seeing how we're just sort of getting through a budget, and we just haven't had a couple hundred thousand dollars, we, this is, I know that, I know that Alderman Harris is very concerned about it being closed, and I know you've had quite a few comments from your citizens.
Yes, so, I mean, I'm in favor if we want to get a couple of Aldermen together to meet with you, Foster. But I am in agreeance of whatever we need to do. I mean, to me, I feel like we should spend the extra $50,000 to tear it down and bring it back up. It's $50,000, and, you know, like you said, get buy-in by the community and, you know, start that campaign process because that is, you know, is where one of our rec centers is, and it's, you know, it's great for the community, and to lose that park, I feel, would be, you know, not conducive to the city. And so we need to figure out how we can rectify it. You know, so it seems like we won't be able to have it this year, but if we can start working on that process and figuring out what we need to do, that would be great.
I agree. I think, you know, the immediate thing that we need to do is look at going ahead and demolishing it to make sure no one gets hurt. And then during the time, you know, maybe you can come up with some, a game plan of some sort and report back to us. Are you and some Aldermen can come up with a game plan? But I think personally, if it's in that kind of condition, we should go ahead and authorize him to demolish.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
I agree too. I just think it's a good opportunity for us to put out a public call, Facebook, whatever it means, to interested parties, interested organizations, you know, Rotary Alliance Club, you know, parent group, PTA's, whatever, you know, to come forward because that's how this was built. I mean, my name's on there because my children were little at the time, and, you know, it was a group of women that just got together and wanted a playground for their children and started this effort and started going to their friends, would you give 25, would you give 50? And, you know, they raised all the money. So all of that was built by donated money. No city money went into it at the time.
And this interesting thing, you know, our kids are out there scrubbing tires and things, that, you know, everybody felt like they had a part in it, you know, they worked on it, and the money was raised. And so this is a very interesting recreational amenity in New Bern that, that Beth and others came to the city and said, if we build it, will the city, you know, maintain it, which we've done and done a good job of. So my question is, is would three Aldermen want to meet with Beth and her original committee and get that input? Because, I mean, I'm not so sure you couldn't get with them and, and the solution be made right within the urgency of not wanting to, I mean, the very, if you don't do anything else, you need to go out there and really take a lot of photographs of what this is. This is something that was very important to our history, and it's like, to me, it would be like a lot of nice old houses around town got tore down.
This is something for the children, for the youth. I believe there may be a lot of corporations and people out there that would give some amount of money to defray the cost of it so that we could have this wonderful place where children and families, and that's what it was. I mean, there was nothing else in New Bern, you know, back, this is what, 30-years, 30?
Twenty-four.
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 I was going to say it's 30-years ago. But, you know, this is where we brought our children. And I think it's important, it's great for the neighborhood, it's great for our citizens, but let's give them the opportunity to own a piece of it and be part of it because that's what makes a better facility, more buy-in, more people use it because they have that ownership in it. So I think it's a great idea to call on Beth and, you know, certainly put some of the Aldermen in there to help, but I'd like to see this driven by the citizens.
To tag on to what she was saying too, because when I first took my kids there, I noticed that there was the names, so even if I get out there and help, I have no problem getting out there. I would love to inventory by name everyone that was, and maybe with the new park, have like a plaque that's dedicated, you know, with the people that originally donated, you know, and maybe we can call on them and tell them and say, hey, you know, this is what happened, would you be interested in donating again? And then we can call Ms. Sabrina and ask her if she wants to donate.
Why not?
But I think that would, I think that'd be nice because, you know, it's a part of history, like they say.
Maybe we can convince Beth, the Chair, Kidsville 2.0.
Well, you allow that she is not a citizen of New Bern, but we certainly want to have her. She lives in Trent Woods.
Beth?
I thought she does.
She lives down the street from me.
Oh, I thought she lived in Trent Woods.
Well, somebody thinks all that jumps count.
Well, I think that was going to say, I thought you lived in Trent Woods too.
Okay, now, what, you know, to, to, anybody that's just recently come to New Bern, I do want to mention that it was amazing to me, and I'm sure to you, that we all pulled up there one, one day, I don't remember what it was, about four or five days, so, and there was a couple of 18-wheeler trucks. And first truck, they opened the door, all these tools were in there. And then all this lumber was there. And then, and then we discovered, right when we got started on, we don't have a front-end loader. And we got all that mulch coming. And so we started wheelbarrying, and that was not going to work. So, got on the phone, called Doe Williams at General Wholesale, Doe had a front-end loader in about 15 minutes. And every time something popped up we didn't, we didn't have, you call anybody and they got on board with this thing. Because, you know, it just built a lot of enthusiasm. And so, everybody, you know, the crew I was on, we were over here, we didn't have a clue what we were doing. This guy told us to do these things, you know, and we're over here nailing this stuff together, we don't have, we don't even know what we're doing here. And he took that part, and whatever, he got another part from that guy, he got a part over there from that because he had his teams, and whenever he put that thing together right there. And everybody had something going, and I mean, they blow a whistle, everybody stopped and went and ate lunch, you get back to work, you know, they fed you. It was a wonderful time. I think you could do that again, is why I'm telling you all this, because I think you could have that much fun with it again.
Foster, I think you have your marching orders. I feel like that is what.
Who wants to be on the committee?
I'll be on it since it's in my order.
You were an original.
I was, but I played school right.
I got you, I got you. Anybody else want to be on the committee?
Sure, I'm the.
January, you want to be on?
My plate is full.
Okay.
I'm just three.
You want to do it? Okay, so I'd like for Madam Clerk that Alderman Odom, Beth, and Harris are going to be on ad hoc, and if you would, get with Beth and see if we can make it happen.
All right, sounds good. Awesome.
Meanwhile, do we authorize them to go ahead and demolish it? How are you going to demolish it? Are you city creator?
I have respect for, I have respect for the original, I mean, I would like for the original folks that were involved to be given an opportunity to make any comments or anything. I mean, Beth is such, was so, had this thing researched, I mean, she might, there might be some things going on we hadn't thought about before you demolish it. I mean, it's been there 24-years, you could just give it a week or two till the committee meets with her. I'm sure that's probably what we're going to do, but, you know.
I'll try to share some of my time, so I like to try to do what I can.
We already got three on the committee.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, can we do that? And Bobby, probably next meeting, probably we're going to make a decision on that. And of course, if you want to make the motion, you can, I'm just.
No, that's fine, I agree with you.
Okay. Anything else on that item?
No, sir.
Okay, item number six, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. This was an item that was on your 12th of June 2018 agenda. There were several people who made some comments regarding the schedule for the Alfred Cunningham Memorial Bridge and their desires to make some modifications to those changes. Under separate cover provided by Attorney Davis, there is a resolution requesting the support of the Board for the revisions to the schedule of the operations of the Alfred Cunningham Bridge. Just to kind of highlight real quickly what the new schedule that is being asked of the D O T and the United States Coast Guard to consider is for the drawl to open on the hour and half hour from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM for pleasure vessels awaiting passage, except as provided in the weekday and nighttime schedules, which are coming up next. The weekdays, Monday through Friday, the drawl shall remain closed for pleasure vessels from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM in the evening. And that is basically to help facilitate the exit of commuter traffic in and out of downtown during commuting hours. Nighttime, the drawl will open on signal, which means on-demand, from 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM. Any other time at that point, the drawl shall open for any kind of public vessels of the United States, vessels of public safety, commercial vessels, tugs with or without barges, and all vessels that are in distress. So that is basically the summary of what is being requested at this time through this resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm going to tell you, Saturday, I was down there pretty much all day with ramp racing, and I'm going to tell you, it seemed to me like every other time I turned around that bridge was there. And the signs of the moving parts and the wear and tear on that thing. Alderman Bingle?
Yeah, I'm good with it. The only question I have is, once, the process of we send the request, you know, what the timeframe is as far as when we would get it back, how we would know if it's.
It's very difficult for me to estimate what that timeframe is. What we will do is, if the Board so chooses that they wish to adopt this, we will immediately send that to the N C D O T and copy the U.S. Coast Guard. N C D O T, since they're the owner of the bridge, they do have to submit and request this from the United States Coast Guard, who has to approve this. And that way, it has to go through all their public notification processes and everything else, so it's very difficult for me to kind of estimate what the timeframe is.
And then beyond that, I guess, once we know, I'm just curious about some kind of signage, would that be our responsibility, or the state that just says, you know, the bridge opens on the hour and half hour, or the bridge is closed during this for commuters and people to know, or do we just post that?
If we wish to post signs, we can, but most of it will be handled through information on the website as well. And most voters are aware of this, they go to websites, they understand the schedules of bridge openings. We've spoken with several, over the past several years that I've been here, that this has been considered. But essentially, there is information that exists on the N C D O T's website and obviously the U.S. Coast Guard's website as well.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to request and support revisions to the schedule of the operations of the Alfred Cunningham Bridge. Second.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris. Is there further discussion? Seeing we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is regarding easements and agreements for entry for the First Street Road Diet work. There is a request from the Department of Transportation to seek for permanent utility easements and a temporary construction easement from the city, since we have ownership along that corridor. In exchange, the city will receive a total compensation of approximately $31,325 for those easements. They're necessary for us to facilitate the planned changes along the corridor, which include the sidewalks along the road diet portion. Happy to answer any questions.
The Board have questions?
Just some clarifications for citizens, please. I've received some phone calls, one of which, I want to make sure the citizens understand that we are not changing the width of the road from curb to curb. So, somebody asked me, by doing these easements and preparing the sidewalks, what if the road diet doesn't work and we go back to four lanes? This does not impact it because the width of the road does not change. So it's just the sidewalks, the easements are for the sidewalks beyond the curb space. Is that correct?
Basically, that and utilities. So essentially, if you want to think of it as where the curb is and on each side of the road, that particular portion of the road will not change. What we're looking at is the utility easements and the additional easements outside of the curb that are necessary for us to facilitate the installation of sidewalk and move any kind of poles or utilities that we need to, to make that happen. But curb to curb, nothing is going to change as far as pavement width.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Odom.
Mayor, if there's more, no further questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving easements and agreements for entry into the First Street Road Diet.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? Seeing we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is consider adoption for resolution approving a revision to the purchasing policy. This purchasing policy was adopted by the Board in 2012 and updated again in 2017 twice. This additional revision is needed to provide for a new requirement from the federal government. Language has been added to indicate federal purchasing requirements will be followed when federal funds such as FEMA and grant monies are utilized. So basically, it's just adding some information that's required by the federal government. Happy to answer any questions, so it's Mr. Sabatelli.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution approving a revision to the purchasing policy.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Odom. Is there discussion? Seeing we have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. The General Assembly has recently modified statute 159-28D2 to allow for local government commission to adopt rules to. commission to adopt rules to address the execution of pre-audit and disbursement process related to local government electronic transactions. This new rules became effective on the first of November, 2017, and on March 12th, 2018. The LGC provided guidance regarding implementation of these rules. The rules allow for exemptions related to P-card, P-card purchases, electronic fund transfers, automated clearinghouse, ACH transactions, gas cards, et cetera. So the proposed resolution before you tonight is the first step in complying with these requirements and the administrative code, and it is requested that the board consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city to engage in electronic payments as defined in North Carolina General Statute 159-28.
Mr. Savatelli, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. This just, uh, this just is a cleanup item related to, related to this general statute requirement. We're already doing electronic payments, this is just a clarification from the LGC.
Okay. Board have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city to engage in electronic payments as defined by North Carolina General Statute 159-28.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris, is there discussion? Seeing now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 10, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Members of the Board. Staff is requesting the board to consider adopting an amendment to the grant project ordinance for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund. As you know, we've been working on this project for some time. On the 22nd of 2017, or 22nd of May, 2017, the board approved a resolution authorizing manager to sign a contract with Bruin Builders in the amount of $2,310,000. To do this, we need to balance out the fund for the cost incurred or to be incurred for this construction, so therefore, an additional $619,407 is needed as an amendment to this fund for this contract, which will be provided through debt proceeds unless we determine at some point that we could do some value engineering and reduce that amount. The Development Services staff continues to obviously seek funding from other sources. We've kind of identified the potential use of maybe some CDVG funds that we could use towards some other projects along that corridor for the sidewalk improvements for the third app, or I'm sorry, for the First Street project. That would free up some money for us to use towards this match that we have. And any additional funding that received will change, obviously, the city's contribution and may, may require us to not have to do debt proceeds in order for us to pay this amount. So we're happy to answer any kind of questions the board may have.
Board have any questions?
Were we aware that this was going to, an additional $600,000 was going to be needed? I just don't remember talking about it.
We, when we initiated the project, we had an idea that this was going to be somewhere between the $3,000 to $350,000 that we were going to have to have for this particular project. But obviously, there is some, some monies that are needed for us to execute this contract and complete the project. One of the ways that, like I said, we've kind of looked to do it is we've got some in-house inspections that we could do in kind to reduce what those inspections are, as well as some potential CDVG funds that we could look at for other items that are within the corridor that are not covered underneath this project contract, but.
And how much money have we already put towards this project?
Uh, there's really not a lot that we've put towards it yet, other than some of the engineering fees and maybe some.
Legal fees?
Some legal fees that we've paid in-house for Attorney Davis's work, but that's about it at this point. But we're at the point now where by executing this construction project that we're going to be starting to spend some money.
Mayor?
Mr. Stevens or Mr. Savatelli, could you just clarify how much total in grants we've received for this project? I know there was two or three, if I remember correctly.
Yes, there's, there are several, bear with me, I'll pull up the information. Uh, see, we've received, uh, we've received $1,298,250 from the EDA grant, $25,000 from the Bay Foundation, $549,000 from Golden, from Gold Leaf, C-1A has contributed, and C-1A has contributed $50,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there's no more questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to the Grant Project Ordinance for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund.
Second. Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Odom, is there further discussion? Seeing now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Agum?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 11, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund as required by IRS regulations that we, we need and are required to declare the intent to reimburse ourselves. And we need to do this prior to or within 60 days of payment of expenditures that will be reimbursed through financing. There's a memo included for Mr. Savatelli, and you're happy.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion, consider adopting a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the City Market Workforce Development Training Center Grant Project Fund.
Second. Motion by Alderman Harris, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion?
Just to add real quick, Mayor, I just want to say, this does not obligate us to actually go out for reimbursement through debt proceeds, it just affords us the opportunity as required by law.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, this next one's a good one. Item number 12, we actually are making an adjustment positively, is that correct?
That's correct, sure. This is a, an ordinance to establish the MSD, I'm sorry, to close out our grant project ordinance for the MSD Improvements Project Fund. Prior to doing so, we need to do an amendment. This amendment, the project fund was adopted on the 10th of May, 2016, for the streetscape improvements along the 200 block of Hancock Street and the 400 block of Pollock Street. This project was budgeted at $800,000. It's now complete and it came in $50,641 under budget. The amendment recognizes $82 in interest income and transfers the residual equity of this amount, $50,723, to the Municipal Service District Fund. There's a memo included with Mr. Savatelli, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions? This goes back to the MSD General Fund?
Yes.
I got shot, Mr. Montague did a good job in saving us money when he did the project, so I guess that's where we got the extra money. Thank you, Mr. Public Works. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an amendment to the Grant Project Ordinance for the MSD Improvements Project Fund.
Second. Uh, motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Harris, is there further discussion?
I think Kinsey got it before.
Did he beat you?
Yeah.
He beat you, okay. Second was by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? Seeing now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 13, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Each time around this time of the year, we're cleaning up our different funds for the closeout of the fiscal year. This is one of our final budget ordinances amendments for the FY 1718 year. This will ensure that all of our projected expenditures have sufficient funds and real lines of revenues to equal the appropriations. There's a various list of items that we're modifying and adjusting, and I'm happy to go over those if you wish to, but in the interest of time, I would just ask, I would just open it up if y'all want to ask any questions we can.
Board have any questions about any of those items?
No, sir. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for FY 1718 operating budget.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Seeing now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, starting with Alderman Odom appointments.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Uh, yes, I have one appointment. I got in contact with Mr. Dale Simmons and he informed me that he would be honored and it'd be a great privilege to continue to serve on the CDA Committee.
Second. Okay, motion is second. I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Do you have any other appointments tonight?
No, I do not.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, I have a appointment to the Board of Adjustments, Mr. Tripp.
Tripp, you're?
Yes, I think, yeah, uh-huh.
Second.
And HPC, I have Chris Evans.
Let's get that first. Uh, who did the second? Alderman Harris?
Yeah.
Um, I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Yes, sir.
Yes, I have someone, I have an appointment for the HPC, Chris Evans.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Alderman Astor?
None.
Alderman Harris?
No.
And Alderman Bingle?
Yes, I have one appointment this evening. I would like to reappoint Mr. Richard Parson to the Board of Adjustment. His, he's eligible to serve an additional three-year term, so I'd like to reappoint him. Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any other appointments?
No, I do have an appointment with the Police Civil Service Board, but I'm not prepared to make that appointment at this time.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Davis, attorney's report.
That's important, Mayor.
Mr. Stevens, city manager's report.
Several quick things, Mayor, if you don't mind, and I just wanted to follow up on some of the requests of the Alderman for us to check into. I know Matt has been looking into the exit numbers on Highway 70 as requested by the board. There, he did some field research and found that primarily, I think it was the Pembroke exit, is that correct, that not properly numbered, and then there was a couple other locations that we need to get some information on.
Jackson Village.
Yeah, yeah. So, so there's several of them that are missing those, an email was sent out to our division engineer who subsequently assigned that to one of his traffic engineering units to take a look at and look into. Additionally, I think there was some requests for us to look at alligator issues.
Yes, thank you.
For those who have gone to Union Point Park, we do have signs up now, we're going to be looking at implementing those signs elsewhere throughout some of our parks where potential human interaction with wildlife are there. Most of the, most of the information that I got from our wildlife resources officials were that if there are situations where there are imminent threats, where say, an alligator may be in someone's fenced backyard, or in their pool, or garage, or something like that, they consider those to be imminent threats and they should be contacted, and they will come and remove that alligator. But obviously, in a situation to where the Neuse River is their environment, he indicated that there's three or four that he's aware of that live out in the Neuse River, all different various places, and all different various sizes, and that that is their natural habitat, and the best thing for us to understand is, you know, in feeding ducks and geese and things like that, while that's fun for the children, obviously, that creates a predator-prey type situation to where they are a predator and the duck and the geese are prey, that they're going to be there and they're going to exist. So we just need to understand that anything east of I-95, I was told, you need to consider the waters potentially have alligators. But if you do have those imminent threat situations, please make a call to, you can call our, our non-emergency number, or you can contact the Fish and Wildlife Resources as well and, and let them know of that.
About the possibility we spoke about last meeting about the, that municipalities had the ability to have a hunting season.
They, they do have that.
Have even shoes.
Yeah, there's, there's very specific guidelines, and I'm happy, I'm happy that if the board, the board's got to choose to do that. I mean, each municipality has to choose whether or not they wish to begin and allow hunting of alligators. There's very specific ways in which you do it. No use of guns, obviously, it has to be, I think it's archery or, or some other means of, of doing it. So someone has to be pretty knowledgeable and skilled in, in the way that they do it. So, but it is up to the municipality, each individual board has to adopt the resolution to participate in it, and if the board wishes for me to investigate that and report back, I'm happy to do so. But the, the information that I got from the, the wildlife officer was that if you have instances where you have the situations where they're an imminent threat, they should be contacted because they will come and actually remove and relocate the alligator. However, if, if, if it's an environment where they exist on a normal day-to-day basis, then the likelihood that they're going to come take them out is, is limited. With regards to hunting season, there's, there's only one per year that each hunter can do, they have to apply, there's a big process they have to go through and tracking and so forth and so on and so, but I'm happy to do that if they wish.
I've been asked about, you know, my only concern again is Union Point Park. Many times I go by there and see children, like with their feet in the water, feeding the ducks, and in that area, I'm just so afraid that, you know, one, if, if they've been seen swimming right outside of Union Point Park, with the splashing and everything could cause them to come closer, and that's my only concern, I'm really afraid for the children, I'm afraid for pets, too, there at Union Point where that little terrorist area is, that they can come up, you know, I'm just not used to seeing them.
I think the safest thing we can do is educate them, that they're there.
Yeah, that's true, that they are there, keep the children out of that area, but I think we need to be aware to look for them and, and see that, but I am concerned, and I just want to make sure we're doing everything possible to keep our citizens safe.
Yeah, and I know we've put up signage at Union Point Park specifically, at those locations, to make, make those aware.
Are they also?
Mr. Stevens, also, not just at Union Point, there's other parks around here as well, are there signs posted saying no swimming?
Would that be something that would help children if they come up and see a sign that
were posted saying no swimming? And if they do swim, that's, you know, not a problem for the city.
Well, the kids are really swimming at Union Point, they're just like standing in the water trying to feed the ducks.
No, 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 I'm talking about sometimes during the summer, you, you know, you have a bunch of kids that go out there and jump in the river.
That's true.
So, I mean...
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we could, we could put up signs everywhere, uh, throughout the city, but obviously, there's, there's, you know, more of an educational component, as Mr. Astor said, uh, with regards to us making sure the public is aware as much as we can, uh, of the, the dangers that exist. Um, I mean, you know, there's bull sharks that are in the Neuse River because it's brackish. I mean, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different, uh, things out in the water that, that, you know, there's pilings from old, you know, um, uh, from old shipyards and everything else that the people could potentially be injured on. So, um, you know, it's one of those kind of at-your-own risks, but it's better for us to educate as much as possible. And what we are doing is trying to educate through, uh, appropriate signage, uh, within our parks to make sure that, that our citizens and visitors are aware of those risks, uh, that, that exist. Um, any more questions regarding that? Uh, I know that, uh, Attorney Davis and I, uh, have spoken and there, that, uh, that he's beginning his work on the, uh, donation or the, of the annex for the RCS, so, uh, y'all had requested that be either on this meeting or the July the tenth meeting. I know Scott was out of town, so we're going to try to shoot for that July the tenth meeting to potentially have that on there unless we run into some hiccups, and if we do, we'll make sure to update you on that. Uh, and, um, I, um, I think, uh, Alderman Best, you had requested, uh, that, uh, you and another Alderman, uh, have some kind of discussion with NC DOT regarding flashing lights, and I know Matt's going to be working on that as well. So, I wanted to update you on those. The other thing I wanted to update you real quickly on was, uh, with regards to the performance appraisals and raises, that was one of the questions that was brought up at our last meeting. Uh, so, we've done some research to kind of give you a little background, you know, the ci- city implemented a quartile system back in fiscal year thirteen, um, and this, in order to do this, uh, it was basically a way for us to provide and allow for raises that helped employees reach the midpoint quicker, um, because one of the things that we were running into were losing employees early on in our career after we spent a lot of money in training and, and bringing them up to speed, uh, losing them to other municipalities because they were getting paid more. Um, so, that's kind of been caught back up. Obviously, we just did a salary study which adjusted some of those minimums and adjusted certain positions based on where the market is, so, not as concerned about that i- in, uh, as much anymore. Historically, um, we've only had about one percent of our employees that were recommended for any kind of variation from the quartile amount, and as you know, uh, quartiles, uh, can cause a lot of heartburn. I think Alderman Astor, you brought it up, uh, with regard to some of our tenured employees only getting one percent, um, and, and other employees who are lower in scale getting two, two and a half percent. Uh, essentially, you know, what it almost boils down to is almost kind of a flat rate increase across the board, because if you take, if you got a person in, uh, that's, uh, in a salary band that makes forty thousand, that's low end, getting a two percent raise, that's eight hundred dollars. If they're on the high end, the eighty pers- eighty thousand dollars, getting one percent, then they're getting eight hundred dollars. So, it's almost kind of, to some extent, a, a flat raise type situation. Uh, so, we've done some research, we've started looking at some ideas, we looked at all kinds of different options, and, uh, I wanted to pass out this real quickly to the Board, um, and if you will, Assistant Colar, uh, will you pass this to them? This is, um, this is a quick, uh, general, uh, little breakdown spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet, we have of all the different funds in which we have employees, and the impacts of where we are with regards to what was budgeted, as far as an increase, and what it relates to as far as the quartile increase. So, as you see at the sec- the second row down, if you go all the way over to the side, it says the citywide total basically is coming out to be about two point zero two percent. Um, what we've provided below is if you wish to go down on that amount, if you wish to go up on that amount, um, to find out what the delta, you'll see that two percent delta, two and a half percent delta, three percent delta, that is the additional monies that we would be short or need in order for us to implement. So, let's take a two and a half percent delta. The two and a half percent delta from the citywide budgeted amount right now means that we'd need another nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine to give a two and a half percent across-the-board appraisal. Three percent would be a hundred and five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. So, this is kind of a little spreadsheet to kind of give you an up-to-date as to where we are based on what we approved in the budget, and if the Board wishes to do anything further, we'll do that. With regards to the, real quick, if you don't mind, w- with regards to the performance appraisal portion of it, um, Sister Colar and I, uh, basically, Sister Manager Colar and I have sat down and we think that it's probably prudent for us at this point, uh, to develop this new performance appraisal system, because the employees haven't been made aware of what their grading scales are going to be and how they're going to be graded and everything else. And we think that there's really some very good, uh, background study that needs to be done by she and I and the department heads to put this, uh, performance appraisal system together before we just roll something out. Um, right now, they've been used to this below meets exceeds type, uh, schedule. I think it, the difficulty is, is how do you quantify that? How do you weight it, uh, based on, you know, each different category you do? So, one of the things that we want to do is, over the next month or two, is to develop this system so that we can come back and, and update the Board as well as the employees on what this new performance appraisal system is going to be based upon and how performance appraisals are going to be done in the future moving forward. Uh, but this is the information that I think that the Board, I hope, was looking for, and we wanted to make sure and get that back to you.
What effective date? Pardon me?
We, we had a line, but I'll let you go.
What effective date would this be?
Uh, this considers twenty-two pay periods, which is a September one?
August one-sixth.
August one?
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth is when this would take effect.
Um, I would, I just want to say thank you so much for all the hard work. Um, I think it's a great idea to allow you guys more time to figure out a new system that would be conducive across the board. Um, if I was to make a recommendation, I would want to do the two point five, because I, I think we'll be able to find, you know, twenty thousand dollars in the budget to be able to do that, to compensate them at two point five percent.
I have a question, though, I guess, I'm, I'm confused. I don't know how to read this maybe properly.
Okay.
But, why does the two percent amount have sixty, it's going to cost us sixty-six thousand dollars?
No.
So, that's-
We're going to be, to the good, sixty-six thousand.
It would, excuse me?
We're going to refund ourselves sixty-six thousand, because the citywide total is two point zero two percent.
I see.
So, the amount would go down.
I understand, okay.
So, then, the item row number two talks about our quartile increase, that's what is budgeted. It says the budget of quartile is four hundred and ten thousand five hundred and nine-nine dollars across all the different funds.
But you also have the vacant salaries there, so you're going to increase the vacant salaries of people that are not ready, because it says current and vacant salary.
That's actually incorrect, that was an old spreadsheet, it's just current filled positions.
It's just current filled, so we're not going to give somebody who hasn't even gotten the job the right, okay, then.
And, and if you recall here in the budget process, for all of our vacant positions, for, for the majority of them, we budget the midpoint. Some of them that we know that are entry level will, will budget the entry level amount, but the majority of them, if they are, uh, upper level, will budget the midpoint, knowing that we're going to try to recruit the best.
Question for possibly JR. JR, how much, um, do we save per pay period?
As far as?
It says twenty-two pay periods, if it was twenty, twenty-one pay periods?
Uh, if we made it, if we made it to twenty-one pay period, bear with me, sir. Uh, if we did, if we did, went to twenty-one pay periods, the delta becomes tw- twenty-six dollars short.
It, it becomes what?
Tw- uh, twenty-six dollars short.
Twenty-six dollars?
Yes, sir.
By, by making him wait two weeks.
By, by, yeah, making him wait an extra two weeks.
Essentially, I think what you're asking, Alderman Astor, is per pay period, you're looking at about eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars roughly, uh, per pay period.
So, what's the next pay period after the twenty-six?
Two weeks later, September seventh, uh, no. September ninth.
September ninth.
Ninth.
September the ninth?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we only did the faces still.
Well, are you ready, can we make a motion?
Um... I mean, is that something that we want to do? Does that need to be noticed?
Well, let me make a motion on it, and then we can discuss it.
I make a motion that we, uh, allocate two point five percent increase in the salary for all employees effective September the ninth pay period.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Astor, second by Alderman Kinsey. Two percent, two and a half percent increase effective September ninth. You see any issues with that, JR?
Uh, no, sir, I, I still need to go through and, I will still need to go through and look at each individual organization to make sure that the, uh, that the amount balances, uh, because you can see by that, by the spreadsheet, that, uh, each individual org has some little bit of money available, uh, some doesn't have enough, so I, I would have to look at each one, each individual one, so that will still would require an amendment regardless, uh, regardless of the timeframe, but it's not that big of a deal.
I have discussion, I don't think we should shorten employees. I mean, I think we have twenty thousand dollars in the budget, I don't think, I mean, we've took this long to discuss what we're trying to do, I mean, to shorten them. That's just mine.
We have a motion, did we get a second on that? No, I'm sorry, Alderman Kinsey.
Question, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Sabatelli, could you tell me what the net increase was in personnel costs from current fiscal year to what was in the budget that was just adopted?
Yes, sir, that will take me a few minutes to pull the information, so please bear with me.
I want to make sure I understand this, and I'm sorry I'm being very dense this evening, but I just want to make sure that I understand this. So, basically, we can give all of our employees that are current a two point five percent raise. Um, if we do it on the twenty-six, we're talking about approximately having to appropriate it an additional twenty thousand. So, we had that much in our budget that we adopted.
We, we have, we are twenty thousand dollars short based on the adopted budget to give our employees a two and a half percent raise.
So, there was money-
Effective August twenty-sixth.
Okay, and if we wait, we're, we're thinking, though, if we wait till September ninth, it's only going to be twenty-six dollar, or about that.
Be a wash.
It's roughly a wash.
Be a wash.
Right.
Sorry, I'm a little dense about this, I just wanted to make sure.
So, I mean, we can do it either to twenty-six-
I want to make sure I totally understand.
We can do it on the twenty-six and, or, or the ninth, I mean, I would love to do it tomorrow for the employees.
I understand why we can't. But, uh, I would have thought the money you put in there, now, the money you put, if we had decided that we weren't going to do all this and we left it the way it was, when would that raise have become effective, or the amount of money become effective? Was it July one, or?
No, we had, we had planned for an August, uh, first pay period in August, I think, what was it, third? Uh, it'd be the twenty-sixth or thirteenth, so, July twenty-ninth, I think, was it, wasn't it?
Something like that.
That's when it became effective, or thirtieth, something like that.
Something like that.
So, it's a month after the start of the fiscal year?
Right, roughly.
Is that pretty typical in the past that you're seeing for raises?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I have the, uh, answer for Alderman Odom. The different, now, please bear in mind, this is budget to budget difference, the appro- the, uh, current fiscal year budget versus the approved budget by the Board, uh, the total salaries have increased by seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Does that include the four hundred and fifty thousand in merit increases right here?
Uh, yes, sir, that, that would include that.
And that number one more time, please?
Uh, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Does that also include the sixth, that includes the six new firemen?
That includes the six new firemen, that's, that's total, total approved salary to current budget total approved salary. So, th- again, this is budgeted, it's, I want to have it available to provide you, budget to budget.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there other questions about the motion?
And if this Board wants to do it on August twenty-sixth, I certainly, I like your, I like the motion.
You'd have to amend the motion, unless you got a second for it, you'd have to either withdraw it or amend it.
Um, let's have a roll call, start with Alderman Odom on the motion.
Alderman Odom?
None.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle? Yes. Thank you to our employees for bearing with us through this discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is this effective for August twenty-sixth or September nine?
September nine. So, we'll make the modifications to our budget, uh, I'll have J- uh, JR take a look at it and, and see if there's any kind of amendments, but I think we should probably be good, being it kind of washes.
Did you have anything else?
No, sir, that is all I have.
We've got new business starting, Alderman Bingle?
Okay, I have a laundry list here tonight, so bear with me. First of all, I want to extend my very, very deepest sympathy to the family of Ricky Bingle. Um, he was the most dedicated city employee, everybody who knew him worked for Public Works. There wasn't a time he didn't flag me down and tell me what he thought. So, um, I am really going to, uh, miss Ricky, and I'm so sorry and so sad for his family and his untimely death, so I really know that this Board, we extend our deepest sympathy to him and his family. Um, I believe his service is Wednesday, is that correct, Mr. Montague? At what time?
Uh, one o'clock, two o'clock, visitation is right at two o'clock.
Okay, one o'clock is the visitation and the service, two o'clock at the Cotton, at the Cotton Funeral Home, but, um, I've worked with Vicki, uh, with Ricky for many years, in and out of office, and, um, I know we're all going to miss him. Uh, second, I just want to have a huge, huge shout-out to everybody that participated in the raft race at Union Point. Um, I remember the first one, and, uh, I'm sorry that I wasn't there this weekend. My, my dearest friend's daughter got married, and I was playing wedding planner this weekend, so, uh, but I've heard nothing but rave reviews, nothing but rave reviews. People out enjoying themselves, enjoying our rivers, and, um, I'm just glad to see everybody who participated and built rafts, I don't think anybody sunk, I don't think anybody.
Wouldn't it?
Okay, well, I'm just really glad, and, um, Steve Tyson, who really got it going, shout-out to him, Trish Williams and all the people that helped organize it, huge shout-out to them. Uh, want to remind everybody about Fourth of July events, we will have that meeting. Um, Foster, would you mind just coming up really quickly and letting the citizens know everything that's going to happen Fourth of July, because that's always been a very big event here in New Bern, and I think it's important, it's coming up.
Okay, this Wednesday, we've got our Fourth of July celebration. We're going to have activities in two locations, um, Lawson Creek Park and Union Point Park. Uh, activities will begin at five-thirty PM. At Union Point Park, we'll have the Second Marine Air Wing Band, they'll play from seven to nine PM, we'll have some food trucks down there. At Lawson Creek Park, we'll have a DJ with dance contest, we'll have food trucks, inflatables, games and activities, strolling magicians and, and balloon, uh, folks there as well, and fireworks will begin promptly at nine fifteen PM.
Right, right. Hope everybody comes out and enjoys everything that Foster and his staff has worked hard. Um, I'd just like to let everybody know that there is construction underway on Spencer Avenue currently. We are, um, upgrading the storm drains and, uh, doing a lot of work there, some of the streets have been closed, and we also have a little issue with, some of the streetlights are out, so it's dark there. Um, uh, Public Works and the Police Department are going to put some extra lights, going to be a couple of days held up, but just to let everybody know out in Ghent, um, we're going to do everything to get it back up, running as quickly as possible, but really, Public Works, David Tennant, has done an awesome job of working in that neighborhood to try to upgrade their services and get the water out of there, so many thanks to them. And then the last, but not least, is that, uh, parking enforcement in downtown New Bern will begin July the ninth. Um, lots of conversations surrounding it. Uh, please go online to either Swissbear, which is downtownnewbern.com, you can come to the City of New Bern website, so you can get all the information. Reminder that enforced parking is only eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. In the core of downtown, it does not, is not being enforced along Broad Street. We have three free public lots at the end of Craven Street, in front of the Doubletree, at the Farmer's Market, and on New Street and Hancock Street, which is behind the Old Fireman's Museum. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, this is going to be, um, a trial, we're going to see how it works, and hopefully I'll report back to you after Labor Day, and we'll have an update with the Parking Committee to see how everything is going. But thank you, that's my update.
I just have, um, a few things. Um, ma- um, so, Mayor, me and you were able to be at Craven Terrace for their, um, Trail, um, Born Learning installation, um, and it was really nice. So, if you are in the area, go out to Craven Terrace and their new parks, the signs we painted, hopscotch and everything, and it basically allows the community to go out and read the signs, act the signs out, and then, you know, talk to their children about it. Um, and then that evening, um, me and the Mayor were able to be at the June Team Celebration, um, that Sharon Bryant and Talina Massey, um, and many others put on at the History Center, it was a wonderful program, um, and we hope to continue it moving forward. And then I had the opportunity on, uh, June twenty-third to, uh, support the boots, in the boots versus badges, and, um, the boots beat the badges fifty to, we don't even know, ten. Um, but we got a lot of comments, a lot of the citizens say that, you know, they loved that we did this, um, even the employees, um, they were excited because it just brought so much morale, and we hope that we can have it every year and make this an annual event, um, because I think the badges need to redeem themselves, because they just had no, no hope, but it was good, and hopefully next time everyone can get out there. But, uh, you know, they did good, you guys were good sports, but I just thought that was nice, so that's all I have. Oh, and Footloose on the Neuse, June twenty-ninth, I didn't go to the last one, but I will be here Friday.
Alderman Astor? The boots and badges, how much, how much money was raised for RCS? Have you figured it out yet?
While Chief's working up, uh, real quick, if you don't mind, uh, uh, to add to Alderman Bingle, just in case, uh, for the July the fourth, uh, fireworks event, if we do have inclement weather, uh, and it gets canceled, we will do fireworks only on July the fifth. Uh, so, all the other stuff will be canceled, but we would have the fireworks on July the fifth if we have inclement weather.
To my knowledge, there was no money raised, but I understand it was over six hundred pounds of non-personal food.
Oh, well, good job, thanks, Fire Department, Police Department.
Too bad we didn't have that picture up there with the shirt.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, also, Mr. Mayor, I, I know it's probably early, but I've had some telephone calls from some of the residents in Old Town that are very much interested in possibly, um, seeing what we could do to convince the DOT, if that's possible, to, um, to continue the sidewalks when we complete the, uh, Road Diet Project, continue the sidewalks down to the Catholic school. Um, is, is there any way that we could just ask them if they could?
We, we can always ask, um, that money typically gets funneled through, um, the bike and ped programs for safe routes to school, or, or some justification means for that. However, uh, most of that money has dried up, we'd have to check and see whether any of that stuff has been added back. Any kind of request of that nature typically have to go through the MPO process, uh, through the scoring and so forth and so on, so it may be better that that go through an MPO scoring process or, or whatever, but we, we're happy to ask, and it isn't nothing more than just a phone call just to see.
Okay, would you do that for me, please?
Sure.
Thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Alderman Best?
for housing, a lot of you refer to it as the Third Avenue Project, I got in touch with the city clerk, and she gave me some information to get in touch with the developers for that project, and I contacted them, and they said that that project would be finalized this spring of 2019, they are now have a phone number posted on the actual site, so individuals that's interested in trying to acquire a home or apartment at that complex, you need to go by, get that number, but I have the number for you as well, for those that were not, is not listening tonight, or even watch TV3. I have that phone number, and it's based on your income, they're basing it off of three levels of AMI income, you have to be 55 or older to apply, so it's a first-come, first-served basis, it's 80 units, so please, once I give you the number, call the number, put your name on, give them your name and your phone number, and they will contact you once they start the application process, which will start three months before the project is finalized. So, and that phone number is, it's 252-772-9006, again, that's 252-772-9006. Secondly, I just want to thank Mr. Jordan Hughes, and I don't know if there's any other department that was involved with contacting and getting in touch with DOT, and they're installing the lights that's needed out there at the 4355 corridor, so that's being installed, thank you very much for that. And also, I had a phone call from a gentleman that, he had contacted us before, Mayor, Mr. Skip Kennedy, in reference to the Neuse Boulevard, the section there by Dollar General, and the Kensington Park Apartments. I see that DOT has installed pedestrian walking signs there, that is great, because a lot of the residents from that complex comes across the street and utilizes the Dollar General store there. He's also asked if somehow we can contact DOT and see if they will be willing to put in a sidewalk, just one sidewalk on one side of the street, where the residents walk to the store, so that they won't have to be walking in the tall grass that's there. And I think that that's all that I have tonight.
Okay, Alderman Odom.
Just want to say welcome to Commissioner Sampson this evening, and that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else on the new business tonight? Now, does the board need a closed session tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sure for 143, 1311, 862, discuss a personnel.
So, move. Question, second?
Second.
All fair and emotions say aye. All pros say aye.